Montgomery County Board of Education, Budget Hearing Number Two, 1st October twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen, Central Office, now called to order. We do have a quorum in place with six members in attendance. We have this amended motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I move that you adopt the agenda, Mr. President.
Second. It is the move, probably second, that we adopt the business's print it for serious discussion. Same here number, those who have favor, let's see, not sure of hands. It is unanimous with six members voting. First item on the agenda, discussion of the FY twenty-eighteen budget, Ms. Brenna Palmer.
A board member, Dr. Emerson, I'm CEO. It's in the public, we thank you for attending our second budget hearing. The initial budget hearing for the Montgomery County Board of Education, two thousand and eighteen physical operating budget was held at four P.M. on Tuesday at five fifteen South Union Street at the Professional Services Development Center. During the course of that hearing, members of the Montgomery County Board of Education requested a development of an alternative budget to the original budget that we presented, reflecting adjustment of certain budget items and revenues that was on the original budget. During the course of the hearing, the Montgomery County Board of Education also requested, the members of the Board of Ed also requested, a presentation of the impact to date with those adjustments in the budget and also an impact of the ALSD intervention to our district. Okay? According to the initial budget, you will see that the initial budget... I'm sorry. The introductory, this slide represents the introductory context to, in relationship to the budget hearing number one. First of all, Montgomery County provides a minimum allowable rate of averlorium tax for education. Our district has seen consistent decline in our student enrollment, which is referred to as our ADM, and that is an average loss of about five hundred and eighty-five students per year. This has a very negative impact on the proportional revenue allocations that we will receive from the state better known as our ETF funds. The third word here is that the Montgomery County Commission also has recently notified the Board of its intent to withhold or to otherwise redirect two point eight million dollars in countywide sales taxes and revenues that's levied and collected for the benefit of public education. Now, this measure is expected to recur in future years. It started in two thousand and twelve with a million dollars and went from one, a million to one point eight, but the overall average of it together is the two point eight million. Uh, three point eight, I'm sorry. Now, MPS is behind the curve according to the original budget that we presented to you and according to our finances right now. We are behind the curve on the transition of the twenty-first century. Of digital learning environments, and that's a great impact on our education and our teaching of our children, is to bring our district up to date to the twenty-first century, digital learning environments. Also, MPS has a substantial backlog of deferred capital infrastructure maintenance. So here, this slide represents the introductory context with the excerpts from the budget hearing number one presentation, and it lets us know that MPS, we know that we are facing a significant financial and operational challenge now and in the near future. This slide represents what I just explained on the slide that due to the steady decline in our students, the decline is based upon a prior year count of our students. This year, the state Education Trust Fund was declined by one point two million in two thousand and eighteen, and so it's predicted that for, our count has already been submitted to the state, and it is much lower than what it is. The ADM for this physical operating year two thousand and eighteen is thirty thousand students, and for nineteen after the count was taken in, after the Labor Day count, it's down to twenty-nine thousand students. So you see, we're a steady declining in our ADM enrollment for our students, and this has a great impact on the funds that we will receive from the Educational Trust Fund.
I'm not, you know, I know this may be trivial, but this, I just want to know this, because I'm keeping up with this and I really get close to it. Okay. Y'all got twenty-nine five oh five.
I'm not explaining it.
Okay, because what y'all gave us in the meeting with Richardson was twenty-nine one thirty-one. Because I, you know, when I asked the other day what we're getting per student, y'all said thirty-eight hundred. So I was really trying to, to look, and that, and we're talking of almost four hundred students there. So I just wanted to know which one is the right number.
And that stated in the first budget hearing, Miss Teague, that a lot of the numbers you saw on that first slide, those numbers were still being verified, and you had to verify, let's say, what was actually turned in. And this is the actual number that we have, approximately average number that they...
As well, this is an accurate number, and I believe the number that was discussed in the meeting with Dr. Richardson is accurate as well. It's a different number. It excludes, the twenty-nine one, I believe, excludes the bed count, right? Excludes the non-student bed count numbers, about three or four hundred students. So for the purpose of ADM measurement, which drives our funding, we use the higher of the two numbers, which is the more conservative of the law of fact. So I believe, but that's an accurate number for full ADM. At the time that we had our meeting with Dr. Richardson, that number had netted a, some ADM for bed count for non-student, or non-student residents, which we have to provide support for as well, about four hundred students a year.
Okay. So given the scope of the challenging circumstances facing MPS, the Board, according to the package you received with the alternative budget, is required, is requested that the Board needs to consider relatively immediately and relatively substantial remedial measures in the near too much time before mitigating declining revenues and increasing infrastructure requirements. So more specifically, the district will need to reduce general fund operating expenditures by approximately six point three million dollars or about two point eight percent within the next two physical operating cycle budget years that we refer to, to address the reduce and reduction of funding that we're receiving. So even at this level of reduction in the absence of supplemental funding sources or revitalization of countywide sales tax appropriation, the district could remain unable to address any of the substantial balance of deferred capital and maintenance needs. Here is a copy of the B one report that you originally received in our first budget hearing, and this is the original budget. This is the initial budget that we put together, and it does, like I say, include revenue that we had added into there, and it overall lets you know that. We will end up in a circle, we'll say five million dollar increase in our budget. However, you'll have over the required amount of our one-month operating reserve fund balance. But this budget did include the sale of the property with the one-time recurring. This slide here tells you that the initial operating balance, our budget, projects a revenue surplus in the amount of the five point three million dollars with an ending reserve fund balance of approximately twenty-three point seven million dollars. So if you'll notice, it, we took a graph from two thousand and fourteen and compared it to two thousand and eighteen. So if you'll look right here where the red arc is here, this means that we meet our one-month operating reserve fund balance according to the first initial budget that I presented to you on Tuesday, Mr. Hill and I. This next slide, when we introduce, the next slide you hear from Mr. Hill to go ahead and introduce the revision of the budget according to the report for the Board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Thank you all, Board. Good afternoon, public. Good afternoon, thank you all for attending. I know the first meeting was a long one, this one's hopefully not going to be so burdensome in detail, but we're here for questions as necessary. So to Ms. Palmer's point, the previous slide referenced a request that was made by the Board members on Tuesday's meeting, at Tuesday's meeting, requesting an alternative budget. So with the initial budget, there is a one-time, non-recurring revenue item for the contemplated sale of a parcel of real estate that's been currently discussed and involving our community and will continue to involve our community in the coming weeks. However, her request, I think it was from the Friday, is to remove that balance as a matter of consideration, we've done that. However, when we do that, and you'll see in subsequent slides, that when we do that, removing a nine point eight five million dollar revenue from the current initial budget results in a significant deficiency, a significant operating deficiency in the current year. Nevertheless, we reported that budget, and you'll see this budget momentarily, we reported that budget, but we also included a third, a second, a third budget, but a second alternative budget that contemplates a balanced budget without the sale of the real estate, without the non-recurring. So we tried to work a hybrid approach in there that says, okay, if the sale of the property is not feasible, practicable, whatever, here's what measures will need to be considered relatively promptly to balance our budget and to maintain, to attain and to maintain our required fund reserve balance, which is a statutory requirement. This is that first alternative. So it's like the difference between the budget that you finished pure as form and the alternative budget you requested, we'll get there in subsequent slides. The alternative budget does contemplate a balanced budget. We will end, this budget notionally with a hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars in revenues and excessive expenditures. On a two hundred and eighteen million dollar general fund budget, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars is relatively flat, relatively minimal, about as balanced as you can be. In addition, this budget contemplates an ending fund reserve balance of eighteen point five million, which approximates one hundred and one percent of your required reserve balance. So it's to your reserve balance pretty cleanly with very little margin remaining. Graphically depicted, this is the fund balance under this alternative budget, right? The red line being the required fund reserve balance as contemplated required by Fiscal Accountability Act, the Alabama County Fiscal Accountability Act. You hit it, right? You're one percent in excess of it. So this is an alternative for consideration. Glad to talk through some, well, the next slide, we can talk through some adjustments. The adjustments that were made against, to the Board, the initial request was to take that one-time, non-recurring revenue out of the budget. We've done that, okay? There's a nine point eight five million dollar, this is, I'll go back. This is the initial budget that was presented to you on Tuesday, just the general fund. It's not the general and special revenue fund we talked about earlier. So did the general fund, which is the fund by which the Fiscal Accountability Act, the viewers of Fiscal Accountability Act gauge your financial health and welfare. The initial budget, this is the alternative, the all-in-one budget that we just, that we just saw on the previous slide. Again, the sale of Georgia Washington still, I'll just call it what it is, comes out of the budget in order to balance, so in order to mitigate, we also reduce expenditures by a decent amount, not equal in substance, because again, the sale of Georgia Washington gets you to a fund balance of five million and excess. You don't have to cut nine million dollars in expenses to offset a nine million dollar sale. You really need to cut about four point seven.
Excuse me, Jason. We keep talking about a nine million dollar stake, and place a nine million dollar into a budget, and then it will be reflected in the, what we call the unreserved balance, which have unreserved balance, understanding is to, that means you have funds that are unreserved that can be used in subsequent periods of time, and which means that if you can use in subsequent periods of time, and if something catastrophic, that means that money has not been certainly come into anything else, and which means you can put your hands on it. And the reality of this whole scheme of things, you know, this Board knows, and everyone else knows, that there's not going to be any nine point eight million dollars even in later next year, because then from what was written in the contract, you would receive at that point five point some eight million dollars, and the others are supposed to be created over a period of about nine years. So to put money in a budget that will not even come to its utility in nine years seems to be a quite bit unreasonable, but then certainly to make those adjustments would have to be made anyway, because we would reflect only an amount of five million dollars, so some adjustment would have to be made even if the sale was made.
Right. In response, the posting of the full nine point eight five million dollars is required by GAAP, not GAAP, the GAAP in the funding, but generally accepted accounting principles. It's an accounting term. It's required, okay? The components of that nine point eight will comprise cash and will comprise an investment, a mortgage investment. And you made a comment, and this is a very respectful response, but I want to make it clear, you made a comment that I know and that we all know and that the Board knows we're not going to see that money for years and years, and that's not accurate entirely. What I know, that the Board does not yet know, is that I found a financial institution to purchase this mortgage. So I don't know that the money's not going to be there. I'm confident that it will be if you all choose to accept it. I've received terms, I've received the rate, I know exactly what it would look like in order for us to have substantially all of that balance, give or take four percent or so equivalent on the net discounted value by the end of the current fiscal year. So that is in fact what I do know. That and GAAP accounting and statutory law, that requires that, the other, the other comment I want...
Yeah, but we understand that, even if that's the case.
The other comment that I'd like to respond to is your concept and your notion, your understanding of the unreserved fund balance. The unreserved fund balance is available for future fiscal periods only to the extent that it exceeds the state required balance, which yours currently does not, okay? So with this asset, we could not expend that cash anywhere, twelve million dollars or twenty million dollars or eighteen million dollars tomorrow, we could not expend that cash balance below the state required reserve legally in a matter of compliance. So even if you have a balance that is comprised, that is composed of a cash balance and mortgage balance, notwithstanding the fact that again, we have an opportunity to sell the thing in cash flow, again, not be at the Board's discretion on some later date, we would bring that to you all for consideration, you still can't spend money, you can't spend, you shouldn't spend money below the statutory required level. So it doesn't really matter if it's cash from a compliance perspective, from a fiscal perspective, it matters a lot. Doesn't really matter though, from a compliance perspective, if it's cash or non-cash asset, it is in fact an asset, and it credits to your statutory compliance and a compliance base review, and an intervention base review, and a review by a state superintendent, and a review by the LEA, the County Department. Absolutely matters. It's an optimal structure. I'm fairly good at this, and I was very deliberate in the points that were negotiated. Now, when a district, actually this wasn't a district, so I'll be clear, when the town of Pike Grove approached us, you all first with a five hundred thousand dollar purchase price, and me second barely with a five million dollar purchase price, when I had them to agree two months later, actually three months later, from that initial offer to eleven point two million dollars, with seven and a half million dollars paid within the first eighteen months, the rest of the money is kind of gravy at that point. They don't have it, but if they want to give it to us later, great, especially considering the fact that we can sell that mortgage. It's a triple-A bond rated town, the mortgage is worth money to someone else. If we need the cash, or if we just want the cash, we can spend it up and sell it. We're going to have to take a discount to do that. Probably going to cost between six and eight hundred thousand dollars to do that, but we can do it.
Jason...
Yes, ma'am.
I really have a real, serious problem with what you're saying. I know what you're saying, and I know you made these transactions, you and whoever, but I, we are not in the business of financing and buying buildings and whatever. If that be the case, why, why sell Georgia Washington? We have other buildings that we could sell. It looks to me, and I have looked at this every way I could possibly look at it, it all boils down to what we're trying to do to sell Georgia Washington to Pike Grove, and that's the bottom line in this, because there are other buildings that are out there. If you can go somewhere and get money to help them pay, if they don't have nine million dollars because the eleven million dollars include one point four million dollars that they owe us anyway, we've been trying to get for two years. So it looks to me like people that are involved are doing more to try to help Pike Grove increase their enrollment and help their students than we are doing for ours, and I mean, we could make the numbers do whatever on paper, we can say it, we can do it, we can do all of these other things, and the, and we're putting lies out there to the general public, people saying we're going to rift everybody and everybody got to reapply. See, all these scare tactics that are coming in here, I don't like that. I, I want you to be upfront with me, and I've thought, and I still think until I, till you prove me wrong, that you're going to be fair with us. But we're, we're talking about this place and five hundred and sixteen students, and one of our better schools now. They are not a low-performance school, they, they don't have an attendance problem out there, they don't have a behavior problem out there, but yet we got Penn Lala over there with a hundred and fifty students in it, and nobody's saying anything about Penn Lala. We're talking, because they don't need Penn Lala, they need Georgia Washington. And I, I really hate that, I don't know whether there are members on this Board, or members in the Central Office, or wherever, but look like everything we're doing in this budget, I don't care how you cut it up, we're trying to accommodate Pike Grove, and it's almost like we've already sold it. They're out there celebrating, and the media, everything Pike Grove does, it's newsworthy. You know, so I just be fair with your, your numbers, be fair with us, and I just have a problem with us accommodating Pike Grove at the expense of our children in MPS. We were elected to do what we need to do for MPS, not Pike Grove, but MPS. And if you could come up with some better figures to help us as MPS Board as opposed to, you know, helping to get money financed, helping them get a mortgage, if they don't have the mortgage to buy the building, we don't need to go and get a mortgage for them. You see what I'm saying? It, it's not passing the smell test.
And I understand that if I could take a minute to respond to a couple of those comments, I do want to act with wisdom, inquiry, by my declaration, I want to ask for clarification. Is your sentiment that I have misled this Board?
No, if I thought you had misled it, I wouldn't say it any other way than saying you misled it.
Fair, I just wanted to clarify.
I don't need to rub a tongue.
I understand.
Okay. So what I am saying to you, Jason, is you have done what we've asked here. You brought us alternative plans, alternate plans, but what I am still saying is, I don't care how you go around in a circle, we still come back to how this is best going to serve Pike Grove and our MPS students. I'm on this Board to look out for the students at MPS, not Pike Grove, and I don't care how this is sliced up, it still looks like the advantage here, no matter how you do the budget, it's going to benefit Pike Grove and not us.
One other thing, one other thing, which we certainly must take into consideration. This is a one-time deal, even if the one deal comes as one-time, but you've already cited in the initial presentation, that we are faced with some challenging times with respect to financing in Montgomery County schools, and certainly, one time to, to make adjustments to a budget on selling property is not a fix, which means then we'll be having the same situation reoccurring year after year, year. So rather than trying to do a banal or a quick fix, let's look at some of those things that would really fix this, and you've already mentioned, there's got to be some kind of deal with respect to averlorium taxes. So at this point, if we're going to ever fix whatever the problem is here with Montgomery County's finances concerned, that we need to get on the bandwagon with respect to increase of averlorium taxes, but that's down in the future, and certainly we can't see what's going to happen in the next two, three years, but certainly we do know that we need to work on this in the next two, three years if we're going to sustain ourselves. Now, we can't in the future say, well, we sold it off that time to balance, what we sell off the next time to balance. We can't do that. So if we're going to sustain ourselves, then what we need to do is look at some funding source that will certainly support public education here in Montgomery County. Now, the thing is, and we always say, we want Montgomery to be the best educational institution or environment in the state of Alabama. Well, we want it to be the best, and let us try to do what the others are doing in terms of supporting public education. And only other thing, and I hear you use a GAAP, General Accounting Principle, and certainly what you want to do, and I understand that you want, and your fix is to say, well, you need that month, and your job is to make sure and ensure that that month's operating balance is there, but we start looking around the whole state of Alabama, yeah, not too many districts that have that one month's operating balance. So let us do what we can do it, plenty of times we can do it, without having to deal with focusing on using general accounting principles to have a one month's operating balance.
Okay, so understand that, obviously that, and in response, embracing GAAP is not a tool to, to attain compliance, and embracing GAAP is just a legal requirement. So the basis for the budget, including all of that nine point five, is direction, I'll just say that, because I know there are some, this is my profession and not everybody else's profession, there are some requirements that require us to do that, frankly. So as well, the comment was made that you can make numbers do anything. I disagree with that wholeheartedly as well, and I think that that's fairly evidenced by the historical trends in our fund balance. If those numbers could be up in here, then I would, I would suggest they should have been. We can just make things happen, and we should have done that historically, and frankly, and relevant to the other districts in the state, there are quite a few that have their fund balance. I was blessed to work with one that was twenty million dollars deficient, not from its fund balance, but from a zero balance. It negated twenty million dollars in the general fund balance, and we found, we turned that into forty, forty plus. So it's doable, it is doable to recover. One tactic that we used was selling buildings. We sold twenty-six million dollars worth of buildings in forty years. We sold to Wal-Mart, we sold to breweries, we sold to churches, we sold to cities, we sold to whoever had the money. And as far as accommodating Pike Grove, if anyone else has eleven million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, I would suggest we accommodate them as well. Strictly based on our finances, strictly based on my observation, and granted, you all have been here, you've got historical context, you've been memorable voices on this Board for, some of you for many, many years, and I have not, so I'm relatively near to this budget, certainly near to this circumstance, but my basic review of the budget says that we probably need an injection of capital relatively quickly, aside from the soft benefits of a sale, and I'm not going to be here to promote the sale, all I'm telling you is that this is what a sale will do, this is what I'm doing to say will do, and then you all obviously have to make the Board's decision in your capacity, and I'll respect, obviously respect that decision. I am strictly here to present facts, but I do want to be certain and clear that what I am presenting is fact, it's fact. The presentation, the valuation, the strategy, the negotiation, that's all fact, nobody has been misled.
Could we work as hard to get the one point that since you, you contracted, if we could work just as hard, you know, to help Pike Grove mortgage, whatever, building or whatever, to get the three point eight back that to, that the county commission is withholding, the one point four to Pike Grove, and the two million dollars that we have paid on new employees and, and benefits, travel, and, and raises and that kind of thing, you're looking at a neighborhood of six point seven million dollars, okay? Now, let's just say we worked just as hard to do that, okay? You in one meeting said to us about getting a, I think it was eight million dollar line of credit.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're not, you said you've made a deal and you've talked to a mortgage shopping or whatever.
I've not made a deal, I've had conversations with a deal, strictly based on the contention on your affirmative vote.
Okay, all right, whatever, however you want to word it. But there, there is a way of, you know, with the line of credit, they, whatever, million dollar line of credit, well, since the sale of Georgia Washington's not going to help us that much anyway, and it's a Band-Aid on what we need, we don't exactly know what we need. We got employees that are not certified, we have employees that, we have on top of employees doing the same thing. Maybe at the end of this student year, we'll find... Uh, maybe at the end of this student year, we'll find out we won't need two million dollars for that. Why, why don't you just use your line of credit to do whatever we need to do right now and we'll talk about us, the other situation later?
They're not, they're not, if any, if anybody wants to ask Pike Road if they're willing to wait to see where they can put their money.
So here you go with Pike Road again, I don't care what Pike Road.
I understand that, but he says that they're holding eleven point two million dollars, that's where I care.
Uh, that's my problem. We, 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 if we worry about, I, I don't give a rip about Pike Road and what they think. I'm concerned about our children right here in MPS.
There you go, that's it.
And we are not doing that and that's what we are sitting on this board to do.
That's right.
And if we are not sitting on the board to do that, maybe we need to move to Pike Road.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Mr. Mr. Porter, not taking a lot of, the back and forth conversation. But go ahead and finish your presentation, there's gonna be time for us to cover some other things. But you have gone through the effort to create the alternative budgets and I'm sure we all really want to hear the remaining questions.
Well, we've been here.
So go ahead and.
Sure. If I may though, Dr. Evans, then they didn't hear what we, I mean, I've had my hand up. And to me, I know how I feel is unfavorable. But I, I, I want it to, to be said that a month ago, we didn't have this decision, we had four-three, I'd like not to be interrupted. But something happened and I think it became emotional. And I'm looking out there, this is a hard decision to make. It's the toughest decision for anybody to make. And I don't like to compare it, but it is, it is somewhat comparable to two thousand twelve when they did the reconstruction of Lee High School. It's not the sale of a property, no, it's not apples and oranges. Okay, but what it is, is you had the teachers and you had the parents and you had the students. And I remember when this room was filled full of people just like you. It wasn't emotional. And we as a board are here to make a business and not an emotional decision. The last time I remember, and, and we had the excuse of Mary was not here, she came in at the last minute and we had a four-three, but, okay, I'll buy that. But the big decision was, hey, I'm upset about the nine years, we can't do this. Now you come in and you have the answer, the magic answer. Hey, it's not here, but we can sell it. I mean, that's what, when you sell your houses and you buy your houses, within probably six months, that mortgage is sold. So you're gonna get your money. And all I'm saying is, for y'all, I, I am going to write another letter, one of my wonderful, you know, five a week penalty, because I don't see why, if y'all were trying to do, why are you not bringing in a, a topo map? That shows that, hey, here's Georgia Washington and you can walk across the street and here is Pike Road. And these other neighborhoods such as Nullwood, such as, um, Peas and Acres, where people can possibly in the future, you know, be a part of Pike Road. I'm not trying to disagree with Mary and, uh, I would not like to be interrupted, please? I know it's an unpopular, we're here with an emotional crowd and I'm making a business decision, which is not gonna get. Okay, but here, here's what I'm saying, is that you wanna get up here and you wanna, as a board member, say, oh, this is not a failing school, when did it not become a failing school because on my list it is? Next, you wanna say there is no discipline problem? I've got a hundred and sixty-four as of last year. I keep up with this stuff. Yes, I'm a nerd, okay? But when we get up here, when you present to the public, at least the truth needs to come. And like I said, I'm gonna end here, I see teachers out there, I see parents out there, just like I was out there, begging to keep my job and was forced into retirement.
You should have been.
Okay, oh yeah, that, that five years, five years, five years as the teacher of the year, sir, and nine classes, to only have psychology ended and turned into one class of hotel management, yes, sir.
Uh, uh, Mr. Porter, just one, one second, but, uh, please. Uh, I don't deal with, I, first of all, I don't deal with emotion. I was the president of this very board when I voted and McIntyre was in my district. I voted to call McIntyre and, and, uh, hang the, uh, hang the road. And I was told, uh, uh, I was told that I would not be reelected. I will tell you, that was like eight years ago. So I, I never worried, I never worried about emotion, I worked, I did the business deal, I did the business deal. But I just know within my heart that all of this is not about money. So you can go wherever you wanna go with that, I couldn't care less. But all I am saying at the end of the day, we shouldn't be dealing with emotion like you and me. And that's all I need to say.
Let's continue, please. Okay, sure. So the fact pattern on the, on the first alternative budget, back to the fact that this is a balanced budget, without the sale of this particular piece of real estate in the current year, which does not, you know, you would need to offset by about four point seven million dollars, whether without gap based accounting, whether without mortgage cash flow, you need to cut. We talked about that at the last meeting. Um, this is the unfortunate, this is an estimate, doesn't all have to be, either the charges from which I estimated that we cut because we can't have implicit budgets in the system. So if you could balance this however you wanted to, I tried to do it as proportionate as possible, weighted to operations and maintenance services to minimize the burden on the classroom, to minimize the direct burden on the kids, operations and maintenance is certainly an indirect burden on the students. But for the purpose of a stopgap, I tried to weight more heavily in operations and maintenance out of, out of consideration for what I was presuming to be your sentiment. Based strictly on analytical calculation of average salaries in these three functions, that would be the equivalent, I'm not saying that's the number of personnel, this is not a fear tactic, scare tactic, I have no allegiance to this deal other than what it does for your financials. But this is not a fear tactic, this is the, a measure of equivalence. So if you could cut four point seven million dollars in utility bills, great, let's start there. Assuming that you can't do that purely and that there's not just four point seven million worth of fat in this budget, at some point, you start measuring this, this burden in, in terms of personnel. And this looks like an eighty-one personnel cut.
If I may, go back to the maintenance and operation. Do we not just order buses? Do the buses not need gas? Does that not fall under maintenance and operations as well? Utility prices are going up, we can't control the increase of that.
Right, right.
So you're cutting, uh, adjusting, moving money, um, from one place to put somewhere else where these are things that we need. Uh, we get, we have to put the buses on the road. We ordered the new buses because we didn't, they were old and they had to play with it to update them.
Yes, ma'am.
We have utility, so we're gonna stop putting buses on the roads, putting gas in the buses and paying utilities.
No, ma'am, my point was that you can't do that, you, 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 you said it very well, I couldn't agree more. We can't stop doing that. In addition though, the buses are paid out of the auxiliary services and those are relatively fixed costs. We did buy the buses, we are servicing the buses with that service fund, this is out of a totally different fund. But we do have more buses to put on the road, we do have to fuel them, we do have to make sure they're compliant with safety standards and safety rules and that. Those are out of this number, which has remained relatively flat here. So I did not presume to cut any from this because to your exact point, those are fixed costs whether or not we educate fifteen thousand kids or thirty thousand kids. Your point well made, thank you.
And I, and I wanna go back to instructional services and instructional supports. Most of our schools are Title I schools, am I correct?
That's right.
And most of our teachers and, and the units are paid out of Title I funding. So why are we putting two point eight million and seventy thousand up there when it seems like the Title I funding is covering a lot of this, help me understand.
Absolutely, I'm glad to do that. So it's true that the majority of your schools are Title I schools, which means that the majority of your schools receive Title I funding. They are eligible to receive Title I funding and they do receive Title I funding. However, Title I funding comprises sixteen million dollars of the entire, in the entire budget, on a twenty million dollar budget. So the majority of your schools receive Title I funding, the majority of your personnel must absolutely do not. Um, this is a cut based purely on, this is a proposed cut, this is not actual, this has not been an adopted budget, this is purely a pro forma, pursuant to your request. The, this number is based strictly on those units that are funded with general fund loans, so non-Title I. So when I looked at the proportion, I didn't skew it for Title I and non-Title or, or, or Title II, Title IX, I didn't skew it for that. I looked at the purest, in its purest form, I looked at the general fund burden of equivalence. And again, this doesn't mean it has to be people, this just means that this is my, I wouldn't even call it a recommendation.
Projection.
But this is a projection of what you all would need to do. And this is the scope of the decisions that you all would have to make as a board, whether it's, whatever it may be, right? Whether it's, whatever it may be, whatever it is, is gonna need to approximate four point seven million dollars to keep you legally compliant and to keep this district operational.
And but, the primary focus once again, if we look at, you know, certainly, if we look at what, what we have there, we're still, we're within the state requirement of that one month's operating budget.
Under this.
If, 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 if we would go forward with, uh, uh, these things being done, if they're projected that we need, you know, for example, uh, rather than, uh, saying, okay, we cut, uh, forty-one instructional units, suppose we cut ten? We could probably do that, we may not be at the one month's operating expense, but then still, we certainly wouldn't be as far down as we were in twenty fourteen. And, and certainly, even with the next budget that you got presented here, uh, we would still be somewhat in the neighborhood of twenty fourteen, which in twenty fourteen, we didn't have nearly, uh, what we need to have as a, uh, one month's operating budget. Now certainly, uh, we should have some time to at least try to get some support from the county, as Mary has stated. We've got one point four million we still need to receive from Pike Road. We still have an opportunity to, uh, petition, uh, for a, an averlorium tax and possibly get our people to understand that's in this district, that we need support. So if, if we could do that, then certainly, we won't have to even look at what these projections are in order to make this happen. Because there are possible, as we say, possible funding out there that exists that we hadn't yet tapped into, had set at the table, come to ask if we can get it, come to its fertility and be a part of this budget here. So certainly, we ought to be given at least that time to see what we can do in order to get this taken care of. Whereby, we won't even have to look at these projections if we went with this budget.
And with the budget we're working with, they said, the foundation, like I know you said that the Title I, there are a couple majority, but does foundation money also cover some of those teacher units?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
So if you take Title I and foundation, would that, would we even have to cut?
If you take Title I.
I mean, well, we have a three million increase in Title I, right?
I know you have a one point five million dollar increase, you have a three million across all of your federal programs, but it's one point five in Title, it's also come down by seven hundred thousand in Title II.
But it does say, but still, that.
Call it three million in federal programs, just, just.
Okay. And then, so to Mr. Porterfield's point that may, I mean, properly, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Porterfield, that would kinda help with some of our two teacher units.
Oh, absolutely. We're looking at the possibility of two point eight, one point four, and, and certainly, we don't know how the public is going to react to our needs, uh, our children's needs. And I certainly would think that recognizing the, uh, 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 condition or position that we're in and we get that out to the public and let them know that we are, are just, uh, receiving the minimum requirement by the state as, and we look within Montgomery County itself, and we have Pike Road who gets two and a half times the mileage that Montgomery County gets, we're at ten, they're at twenty-four. So if we can, uh, share with our people, share with the, uh, uh, parents of the students who attend public schools in Montgomery County and recognize the need for some support, that would be stable funding for public schools and there's strong possibility that we won't have to even take a look at these projections because the money would be there to support public education in Montgomery County.
Can I ask you one question, Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
A, a legislator told me that they were going to give us a little bit more money per student this year. Do you know anything about that to the best of us?
I don't know, I'm not gonna say it's blown smoke, I don't know the real kinds, but I, I don't know what they're gonna do this year in the, out of the fiscal office, I have no idea. Uh, what I do know is that, well, I leave it at that.
Let's, let's just move on with it.
So, and if I can comment, though, because I think it's important for our public as, as well as for y'all to understand this, these projections keep us flat in the current fiscal year, twenty eighteen, okay? This is what I think I know based on conversations that I have had and based on just inherent knowledge that I've done. Relevant to the county commissions we're holding, we've met with them, they've indicated that for, of course, they already approved their fiscal eighteen budget, which does include that money being utilized as a debt, it's, it's in there. Unless they, unless we were successful in petitioning them to reconsider that balance to their detriment or they buy, whereby they have to go find that kind of money, I'm not sure that they're willing to do that. Comments that we received was that they were not and that they were absolutely willing to talk about it going forward. But this is for the current fiscal year, relevant to the other issue. You mentioned the one point four again from Pike Road. I'm not going to opine on their propensity and willingness to wanna give you that money if other things don't work out. That's, that's not for me to, to justify. But that money doesn't touch this general fund, it never has. It came out of the capital fund, it was an appropriation from the state ETF budget that was required. Different, Mr. Smith, you, you talked about the foundation program coming into this balance? There's a, there's a, there's a balance that they cut out of a hundred and sixty-eight million to about seven million, a hundred and sixty-nine million, about seven million, that flows to and through our capital projects fund by requirement. It can be used to service debt, it can be used to service, uh, substantial construction, capital renovation. That money, if and when we receive it, will go back into that capital projects fund. So it will not touch your debt service year, uh, your general fund. It will not in the interest of the benefit of, of your effort toward statutory compliance. So we want to address that, the third point, on an averlorium tax basis. And I agree with you, we've talked about at the last budget year, we've talked behind closed doors, we've talked in the front, about the need for additional alternative funding streams, right? Sale of buildings is not a sustainable business process if you're not a real estate brokerage firm, it's just not. Um, so that's not a sustainable practice. The averlorium tax rate, um, is definitely a conversation that needs to be had. It's definitely a conversation that needs to be had with some strategy and with a heck of a lot of facts. Um, however, in any event, we're looking at a current year budget. In order to balance a current year budget to become legally compliant this year, a tax referendum, if it were to succeed in the spring, would become effective at some measurement at that point, probably the beginning of the next averlorium tax year, which is ten one of eighteen, for which taxes are collected on ten one of nineteen. So we are in the fiscal twenty twenty year by the time your ref, by the time the notional referendum bears any fruit for this district. While I agree with every word you said, from a timing perspective, I don't know if that's the best speculative tactic or group of tactics to take. Uh, and I'll leave that at that. So, so ultimately, to balance your budget, never mind this, that's not a fear tactic, but never mind the personnel. That number is what you've gotta find this year. Assuming the initial budget projections are accurate, you've gotta find that number this year to balance your budget and to maintain compliance in my job, engaged by the state, in the benefit of what county, not for the benefit of any other school, district, or Chabutah, Mississippi, to benefit this district and to help you all become legally compliant, not almost legally compliant, but legally compliant, though, from a timing perspective.
We're legally compliant since twenty fourteen, so all of a sudden we become legally compliant?
And, and to go back to the county commission, I know that they can get together and pass that mileage increase at their next meeting. So it doesn't have to take until twenty twenty, that's.
Sure, it could take until twenty nineteen. So the next time they pass a mileage, the effective date of the collections for mileages, they collect the mileage in a year. So you're talking a time, I mean, it's a great thing to have, I mean, you can buy warrants on it and on, on, on anticipation because it's a natural demand, but you can't do that for working capital. So as far as working capital goes and the liquid fund balance reserves and current year operating expenditures, I'm not saying we don't look at averlorium, I think we have to, right? We're at the minimum, right? There's only one way to go from here, legally, right? We're there. But from a timing perspective, given all of the other circumstances, I think that, I think that, 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 it doesn't matter what I think. You won't see that money for a while, you won't see that money for a while. And certainly, we're not gonna mitigate the need for that, for that issue to be corrected in the current fiscal year. That's all I'm trying to say, disregard this box. I didn't mean for that to be insensitive or misleading, but that is a fact as far as it being an equivalent.
And that's the equivalent, though, to maintain that one month's operating balance. That would have us at that one month's operating balance.
Right.
And if history teaches us anything, we haven't been at that one month's operating balance of ten years. So this year, it's supposed to be the miracle year, that we are at that one month. So this year, it's supposed to be the miracle year, that we are at that one month's operating balance by either, by either doing what we have projected there, or not doing what we have projected there, and remaining where we have been in the past years.
I don't think that's an alternative. It really isn't.
I'm not sure.
That's what, that's what I said.
The intervention team with the ten percent raise and hiring these, really stop salaries. Intervention is why we're where we are today.
We have questions.
After the presentation.
Okay, well, it's true, we want to get to it. Can we move on to the alternative as requested by the board? This is the second alternative operating budget as requested by the board members at the last meeting. This is in pure form, the alternative that you requested without any mitigating offsetting reduction in expenditure. This is what you all have requested we prepare when we've done so. That schedule will be one of the times to place, uh, a deficit operating balance of four and a half million dollars in the current year, and an ending fund balance of thirteen point eight million dollars, which approximates seventy-three percent of your required balance. Graphically depicted, there's your fund balance, and the red is your required fund balance. This is similar to the same comparison we just saw, right? You'll note that the last comparison had some expenditure adjustments in it, this one absolutely does not, again, in its purest form. This only controls for the reduction in that non-recurring real estate item to remove the, the sale of real estate. Again, the four and a half, four and a half million dollar deficit, uh, budget, and your, your three, your thirteen point eight million dollar deficit reserve fund balance. To compare to say, we've got three alternative budgets before you today. Um, I thought this would be helpful, to line them up, right? We've got an initial budget, we've got, we've got an initial budget that was presented on Tuesday. We've got a first alternative budget that you all heard today, we've had a decent amount of conversation around that. We've got a second alternative budget that was just presented. From a financial comparison, every one of these decisions is based on finances and operational impact, right? I mean, if you've got an impact, is it financially impactful, or is it academically impactful, operationally impactful? So I wanted to look at it, or allow you all to look at it from, from two different perspectives, but also in silo. Option one, financially, will generate a five point three million dollar revenue surplus in the current year, and will allow you to attain, not maintain, but attain your required fund balance, uh, to the tune of a hundred and twenty-six percent. The first alternative, again, is the bud, is the balanced budget with some offsetting expenditure reduction. It gives you a flat budget, two hundred dollar dollars-ish, and one hundred and one percent of your required balance is attained. Again, it's attained, not maintained. The second alternative provides you with this substantial deficit in operations and a substantial deficit in your ending fund balance. Those are the financial comparisons, right? Highlighted for your consideration. On the operational front, these are the decision points of this board. Um, and all of the yeses that are highlighted in red are highlighted in red for a reason. Those are difficult decision points for a board. So every one of these silos has its difficult decisions, that require your consideration, your deliberation, hopefully, your public support, because it's challenging, and it's your challenge to have. For all of the sparring and all of the editorializing, I'm here to present all of the facts, and it is strictly your decision. One thing you'll notice, this bottom round here, for every option across the board, has yeses on eventual impact on instruction, instructional support and operation. I guess back to our conversation from Tuesday, I think it was one of you all that made the very acute point that the sale of any real estate, especially a non-recurring real estate, is not a cure-all. It is not, it, it in and of itself does not promote sustainable business practice. It makes a lot of shift in behaviors toward the same. But it in and of itself does not prevent, prevent all these yeses from becoming our very near-term reality. So, that's a, that's a, that's a non-issue right now. For the purpose of this year's budget, this bottom piece is a non-issue. Talk about that another day, it gives us a fiscal year, depending on the alternative up here, depending on how much time this eventual is. But you control for all of the other factors, eventual with yes across the board anyway. So under the initial budget, you've got a one-time sale of real estate contemplating. Under the balanced budget, you've got presumably, um, some impact on the classroom. It may not be eighty-one personnel, but it's going to be four point seven million dollars worth of something or some ones. Well, the second alternative sees us with substantial deficiencies across the board, but no real estate sale and no changes in current behavior. So those are your alternatives. Graphically depicted, there's your ending fund balance under each, initial, alternative one, alternative two. Um, in closing, on the financial side, I'll get to.
Will you call, there's one, one more thing here. Uh, the Anet program, which was two hundred and ten thousand dollars at, uh, Micro Center, I'll be able to score.
Yes ma'am.
Then by the nation. Now, now that he's gone, uh, we're gonna have to pay that two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Then we have something called Edgem, uh.
Edgem new ticket?
Mm-hmm. So, whatever was, yeah, I guess that was, uh, formerly the conference program that we had to a tune of five hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And there's something out there called Power School. What is that? And how is this that company?
Sure, I can answer that.
Will the state pay that, uh, uh, is that an obligation of ours as well, or this budget you have?
Sure, I handle those in order. The second two are real easy, because I don't have an answer of it. The first, Dr. Edgerton, or the construction side of the first one, Anet, two hundred and ten, they did provide a service over the course of the summer. We do have to pay that balance. However, this may or may not matter to you all, but there was a substantial balance contemplated on the other end of that contract that we give off before going. So we are obligated, and we shall pay that balance out of the Montgomery Public Schools budget. It is included in the seventeen budget, in the seventeen budget, not the eighteen budget. So it is over and done with, the services have been provided.
They, they were able to do, uh, that they, we were able to back out of this contract, is that what you're saying?
We were able to avoid, we were able to avoid engaging in additional contracts. They were standalone contracts. We got one, we avoided two and three.
Okay, the Edgem new is it?
I believe that's a standing contract that pre-existed the intervention there. As is Power School.
So, well, they type of this?
Is that? MDS?
Dr. Richardson.
No, no, that's a, that's a Montgomery Public, County Board of Education initiative that predated the intervention. So I'm not sure what, what.
And we don't know what this Power School is, maybe that's the academic mistake.
Uh, is Power School on the SIS? What was this Power School?
What we ended up doing with most of the contracts that provide professional development, that does not come out of the general fund, that comes out of Title II. We tried to do everything possible to support the schools using those Title II dollars for professional development and any services that go directly into the schools.
So that does not, uh, impact, uh, general funds?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. That's all I need.
Well, I have one more question, or a few more questions before we close. Um, Ms. Palmer, what has ever happened when we have not met the budget? How have we been able to operate?
We have, the state holds a meeting with all districts that does not meet their one month operating reserve fund balances, and they give us alternatives of areas that we can, uh, improve in to help the district, and one of them is the CMP program. And since Mr. Taylor has been aboard, he has, uh, helped the CMP program, uh, to get started along with Michelle to help that company to bring in extra funding. And the rest, uh, is just left up to the superintendent. And, uh, HR, and we sit down and look at the needs of the district, and they make the decisions from there.
And this lady might be a big deal, but can you explain to me, I know we're just now getting a budget, but why was the budget late?
Well, there are several reasons, um, Miss Smith, that, um, it had several impacts on the intervention coming into our district, and also with us, uh, reevaluating our district, um, as far as what the needs were. And those needs were to be met, to continue to correct education for our children. And so, I know everybody's hearing about the personnel that's been drawn in, or whatever, the district, it was reviewed and everything was looked at to determine what was really needed in it. I can't really give another definite answer. I, number one, is Aaron CSFO. I've never done a budget, and, uh, I've also, um, partnered with ASFO, I believe that, mentored me, put a report with me. And when Mr. Taylor was appointed with me, he assisted along with a retired person to come in to help me build the budget. And so, at starting in August, first of all, it was like, starting in August, you cannot start building a budget in August, um, something as soon as, in September, the fifteenth. And waiver was asked and granted because of those reasons. And, um, so we've been working very hard, trying to look at everything overall of the district to get a budget. However, seventeen was not approved until in February or March of this year. And so, there again, it takes an impact on the district, it's just not sitting down pulling bones on numbers or reports from the computer. It is actually knowing your exact figures. As I say to you in my first budget hearing, that some of the numbers may not be accurate, but they will be accurate if we add it to the MPS website.
Okay, and, uh, another question, this one probably is with Jason. Um, Ms. Briers mentioned the one point eight million, uh, from the county, the two point eight million from the county, and the one point four million that should not have been a part of the contract with Pike Road, that's a separate issue. Uh, will we be, because it is separate, will we be taking legal action to get that one point four million back from Pike Road since the state gave it to them? So that we can add it to our reserve? Because I've not heard anything about going after that.
Let, let me share this. There's a law, ma'am, which states that if any government entity misappropriate funds, misappropriate funds, then that government entity is held responsible, liable, for making sure those funds get to the, uh, the correct place. So, it's not so much on Pike Road. The one who made the mistake with State Department, the State Department by law is responsible, since it's a government entity, is responsible by law to make this right. So certainly, uh, the State Department should have, when their monies were distributed this year, they should have been deducted the one point four million, and that one point four million should have gone to Montgomery County. Now, if it's hadn't been done this year, then certainly, we need to go at the State Department, in terms of having the State Department to do right with respect to taxpayers' money, and see that it gets to the right place.
Because we had made appeal to the state in regards when it was discovered that, that money was erroneously sent to Pike Road. We had made an appeal and talked with the people at the State Department of Education, and our previous superintendent, and, uh, the superintendent at the time at Pike Road, had a meeting and made it together, that they said that we would have to recoup those funds from Pike Road.
So then we need to do legal action, that's what's up to the DA, the Attorney General, and.
Talking about that exactly.
Mr. Porterfield?
Yeah, we can talk about that. Uh, Ms. Selton, please.
What I, I agree with what you're saying about the one point four million from Pike Road. However, we have heard today especially, it was resounding to me that that is still not going to affect our general fund. That one point four is not going to have an effect, but the eight point, what is it, four or seven million that we've got to try to recoup? Eight point four. I think that this has to be a huge alarm for everybody in Montgomery County. I mean, I love the chart that we got, the summary with the three different alternatives. Um, we need money, and this is not just for twenty eighteen, this is going to be nineteen, twenty. It's going to be continuous, and we do need to talk about the ad valorem taxes. But even then, we've got to stay, and I can't remember if it was Ms. Smith and Ms. Briers' last meeting, we've got to right-size our district. Now, I understand, I met with, um, families from Georgia, Washington last week. I understand, I get why they're upset. There are a lot of reasons, but two of the biggest reasons that I heard was, number one, we know there's a difference in rural poverty and, um, urban poverty, poverty, excuse me. They feel safe at that school, and they don't want to be bussed in or taken to a school that's more of an urban feel of, of school. So that's a huge thing for them. Um, and I, but the thing is, this is not just going to be a Georgia, Washington, resigning, redistricting. This is going to be something that affects every child that's in elementary and middle school. This is not going to go away after this. All, all of us, in all of our districts, are going to feel the burden of not having enough money, and I think that we need to get that out.
Uh, we also need to get out, uh, that this, uh, what we've, you've gone right back to Georgia, Washington, I thought you passed that. But we need, we, we, we need to also get out that the fact that, uh, that Georgia, Washington just doesn't affect the children in Georgia, Washington.
That's right.
We must understand that it affects every child at Car, uh, children at Brubaker, children at, uh, uh, certainly, Bellegrand, children at South Blom. So it's a domino effect. So let's not just say that the children that's at, uh, Pike Road, and they are safe, but we've got other children who are going to be impacted too. So we can't forget that now. Uh, and certainly, we ought to be looking at that which is in the best sense for our children. We shouldn't disenfranchise our children in order to support another district, and I'm not in favor of that. But let's move on with the budget, and let's end this.
Well, I've, I've got a question about the budget, if I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
On, on the three, you got your initial, first alternate, second alternate. Now, the initial and the first alternate give us to where we need to be as far as having, uh, reserves, okay? The, the second alternate does not, and so my question is, do we even have that option? Because we, we're supposed to vote on a budget today in the work session. Do we even have that option, since we are under intervention, to not have the, uh, reserve that's required under law?
Not, not really of this, it was, it was operated by the State Department personnel, is that notwithstanding the intervention. Without regard at all to the intervention. Fiscal accountability act requires that a local board of education plan is established and replenish the reserve whenever it has depleted itself below the reserve.
Right.
In addition to that, there are only two permissible circumstances under which a board can run below the reserve. Um, our reasons don't apply either, but, um, so, because neither one of these circumstances is our practical reality this year or last.
Um, so doing nothing is not an option.
I would suggest that, I would suggest that this alternative budget could be subject to legal challenge.
Right. Okay. I just want to note, so really, our first, our initial and the first alternate are our options to vote on today. The second alternate, we could do it, but it wouldn't be the thing to do.
Yeah, I can't say that. All I'm saying is that these are sound budgets.
Right.
These are sound, practical, compliant budgets.
Right.
This may be subject to legal challenge, and certainly, not by me or anybody in the intervention thing.
Right.
But.
Okay.
Well, if that's, they should have been challenging budgets way back to twenty, twenty fourteen. They should have been challenging budgets back since twenty fourteen, because we have had, for one month's time. If that is going to ever be a challenge, the challenge should certainly, uh, exist before this year.
And here's my other, Mr. President, my lady, you get, okay, so you challenged twenty eighteen, we don't have the budget twenty nineteen, there's a challenge there. You don't have the twenty twenty, there's a challenge there. So, at any time, from my understanding, if you're not making, leaving a reserve, there's going to be a challenge. So what's so different with the twenty eighteen versus all the other years after that?
Uh, before that. What's different about?
I mean, well, with, I'm sorry, with the second alternative, uh, that you provided.
The, the difference is that this balances expenditures to some certain extent. I'm not going to say to a great extent, because y'all are very likely funded on a local revenue basis. But there is a balance, there is an increment in this, in this expenditure line. It is discretionary, it is subject to reduction, and is in fact, subject to reduction by your hand and at your decision. So an entity that would challenge this budget, or this budget for that matter, because this budget is, I mean, that's thin, that's thin, you're going to go right back next year, is going to say, you all have the powers, you all have the authority, and you all have the obligation to make adjustments to this line. That's what a challenge would look and feel and sound like. I would suspect that. So, to your point, I see what you're saying. If they were going to allow it, and it's just, it's just a document you put in the box, yeah, we got sued again, we got sued again. I don't know that that's what a challenge would look like ultimately, but, but you're not going to get sued, you're going to get intervened.
You're already intervened.
That, that's right. That's why we're trying to help.
Are you back then?
Uh, well, sure, I can, I can skip the last couple of slides if you like, I don't know that you'd like.
Well, we have nothing for you, but, but there's one thing that stood out at, at me. Um, let's, let's, let's listen up for a moment, please. Um, Ms. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I don't know if everyone else received this, but in my packet, when I ran off my materials, I ran off something that was so shocking, I'd just like to fold it now. It said, Alabama State Department of Education. It said, Alabama State Department of Education intervention since April twenty seventeen, support from the ALDS, the FMSD intervention resulted in a positive financial impact to the District Young Fund. Now, with that being said, to me, uh, you know, I, I feel that not only my intelligence and intelligence is sold, it should be everybody's, it's a statement. You know, it seems as though to me, you know, you, and I thought about this, you, somehow when you put something writing like this, the old saying is, you pee blanked the blank on me and make me think it's raining outside. That's exactly what happened in here, to say that they have had a positive impact. All of us know that we did not have a CSFO officer in place. And if we had had a CSFO officer in place that is as smart as your firm, then certainly we would not show that the State Department had had any kind of positive impact on this district, but yet a very negative impact on this district financially when we look at budgets. Your firm was smart enough as CSFO officers and understanding gap, general accounting principles. See, you were able to take uh, the CFP pass through, but that still was a part of our budget if we had our senior uh, CSFO officer who was capable and knowledgeable enough to be able to move it where it should have been. Which means then, that all of this that's presented here in this paper that's showing something of a positive financial effect, certainly it turns to be a negative financial impact with respect to the intervention of the State Department, because the State Department hadn't brought a dime in this district. All the monies that we have identified here are already in this district. The monies that were in this district were impacted negatively by the State Department, because what I see here, they've taken not only two hundred ninety-one thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars for employment, they took also two hundred ten thousand dollars for ANET contract, they took also seven hundred sixty-five thousand dollars to clean buildings. You haven't even listed in there the ten percent that they took out of our budget to, in fact, give every principal in the district.
And which one? And the two ninety-one, this is a...
The two ninety, I don't have the two ninety-one on this form.
Is the reference, is the number you actually referenced?
Well, see, all those are, all of those, all of those. In terms of monies that expended, came out of Montgomery County's budget.
Right.
And all the money that was found was already in Montgomery County's budget. They haven't brought a dime in here to support Montgomery County. And initially, when we went into this intervention, initially, when we went into this intervention, we were sold on the idea that the state was coming in to intervene to help us with resources to help the children in this district be successful. At this day in time, and at this point in time, not a dime has trickled down to those children. Only monies that we've seen that the state has given were for two people, that the state has done to have support us, that's you and Dr. Exelier. Everything else has cost this board, this district, everything. And not a dime have they given for textbooks to help our children, uh, other supplies that we need. Well, I see that four hundred thousand, we got that anyway. Uh, but uh, the thing about that is, we were looking for and we were expecting support, financial support from the State Department when we entered into the intervention, and not to come in here and wreck this budget. And then, in the, in the same tone, says that they have come in here and uh, uh, had a positive impact to this District General Fund.
Took a tune of eighteen point three million by the end of this year, and it depended on your intelligence.
It did.
I apologize for that sincerely, because I drafted this slide, and I'm confident in its numbers.
Well, I, I, I know, I know one thing, they hadn't brought a dime in here to support any of this that you're saying, that we, what, what we spent on, and I know one thing, dollars are dollars. And I know if I look at dollars here, they didn't do anything to say that they supported us and had a very fin, positive financial impact to this district.
Sure.
The money was already here.
So, well, if I can make a comment about that, I'm going to say you want to believe me of this. I'm, I'm confident in it, I'm relatively decent with numbers.
I am.
Okay, well, as far as concept goes, and I had another experience conversation with another board member before this started, but you, you referenced your money that you already had in the budget, whether or not you knew about it, whether or not you had the, the, the capacity in, in your, in your finance officer mind, whether or not any of that were the case, right? You had the money in your budget. Then Jason Taylor, Memorial Place Strategic Park, you referenced, you showed up with eight million dollars, sack full cash deposit in the York General Fund, absolutely, and I wish I could. However, what you had was a bicycle in the basement. We, through knowledge of law, flexibility waivers, simple requests, understanding of ETF appropriations built from last year, we took the bike out of the basement and put it in the yard. Now, which bike do you think has an optimal utility?
Well, if we have a CSFO officer, as astute as you are, if we had a CSFO officer, which we've been working on, then nothing, it wasn't the same thing.
And I appreciate that compliment, I do, and I take it as such, but these numbers are sound, this benefit is sound, and without, and, and because you don't, and I didn't mean this without most respect for your, for your debate, because you don't have all that, all of the positives on this side likely would not have occurred. Now, that's not a credit to me, I'm just, that's a credit to the intervention.
It's a credit to you and your firm.
Well, and I appreciate that again. The, 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 the issue here is this, the issue is the trajectory, assuming that you all would, would, you're, you're, I want to be careful how I say this, because I, I want to maintain respectable tone. But where we've got an alternative here for three budgets, and it feels like the board is not inclined to make much of a change toward one of the more difficult budgets, you want to then turn on this comparison and presume that you would have done things totally different to turn things around on your own. It seems very contradictory to me.
No, we would, we would not have, we would, we would not have turned it around on our own, but we had a person like you who was sitting in the place of a CSFO officer that would have already been there.
Sorry, no, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm...
But it's no real money, it was added to the staff.
Unless until board policies are cleaned up, board finances are cleaned up, and, 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 and much of the burdens on this state with operations, you may have a difficult time finding what you think you need in that room. I'm, I'm just going to be honest with you in that regard.
Mr. Porterfield, I just would like to say too, because I think we need to live on, because we can debate this till the hot come home. But second of all, unless we show that our board is willing to make tough decisions, and it's going to be tough, it's not going to be easy whether we choose the first or the second um, of those budgets, we're never going to attract a competent CSFO that will work for this board if she or he sees that we are not willing to make very difficult decisions. We can't stay and not follow the Alabama code, we have got to adhere to it. We have to make some difficult decisions, but together collectively as a board, we've got to decide, is it going to be a rooftop or heartbeats? Are we going to let people go, or are we going to let a, a rooftop go? I, I mean, it's at the pleasure of the board.
We, we, we have to move on, because we've got questions from out there also.
Jared, you, did you listen to me, uh, Mr. Porterfield?
Yes, rooftops are, rooftops are people.
We've got to make the decision, that is what we were elected to do.
Bottom line, we make decisions with respect to rooftops or people.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So that's what we, we got.
Y'all, in pursuit of now the second budget hearing, I appreciate the spirited conversation, I am impassioned about state floor finances, you know, well, Brian. And I hope that none of the presentation, Mr. Porterfield, I am apologetic for anything that might have offended you in that.
Well, I, you know, I appreciate all that you've done, uh, 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 Jason, I really do. I appreciate all that you've done, because you've really come in here, and you've done some things with our finances that we possibly, as you stated, if it had not been for you, these things would have never been uncovered and done the way it's done, as always the gap of your general accounting principle. But we do appreciate you for doing this, no reflection on you. I have the utmost respect for you and your confidence in terms of what you've done. But then, let's suppose we had a person that was a competent issue already in place, then certainly, looking at the overall scheme of things, in terms of money, the State Department itself actually didn't do anything for us, money, Jared.
Ms. Porterfield, thank you, I just thought you were here, I would raise my glass to that.
Again, I think that's the board, and thank you, probably, uh, for attending, uh, second budget hearing. If you have any questions, we've provided some forms here for you, it's on the table back here, and we ask that you most certainly put your questions here, or feel free to contact me, um, yes, ma'am.
I mean, if we're going to have a budget hearing on the budget, and you put on the agenda...
You didn't have that question yet.
Yes, you don't have a lot.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
My, my question is, first of all, is um, in, in the state of Alabama, how many districts are not in compliance with the mandatory uh, budget, uh, reserve funds? I know when they intervened, Mobile was sixteen million short, and we were five million short. So how many other districts are short?
I've got those numbers, those of twenty fifteen, I can figure it out with twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, if I close that, probably thirty-five.
Okay, so thirty-five, and so it looks like Montgomery was just single out for this, uh, that was just a tool used to intervene in Montgomery. Uh, then, the state took over, we're not even being emotional, but the state took over, had an imposition of Montgomery Public Student System in twelve, so, and that was never brought to a close. So it looked like to me, whatever budget problems we having, is from the state, and then the state caused the problems, and then now they want us to fix them. Let me give you some har, uh, little lesson, if you really want to make some hard decisions as a board, I suggest you find all other people that came in under the intervention. Uh, Jason said, that's an additional one point seven million expenses. I suggest that you go through, I think about roughly sixty schools, reduce each school by one staff member, since we gave the principals uh, ten percent raise, and that ought to just about uh, get us to the four million that we need, and that's general accounting principles. Thank you so much.
Generally accepted, gentlemen.
Generally accepted, gentlemen. Thank you, thank you. All right, any other, any other, yeah, fine, we got one more. That one, yes.
And with all due respect, good afternoon, Dr. Exelier, Montgomery County Board members. I, I wanted to come today um, to discuss the pre-K budget that I recently had a chance to look at. Um, and I was shocked to see that the twenty-five percent allocation from the district is, will be withheld this year, with no regards to the ESALO, as it relates to uh, multi-year grant funding. For the past five years, those funds have been supporting learning experiences for children, for pre-K children, that they wouldn't otherwise have. Prior, excuse me, prior to the rearrangement of the budgetary assignment, I submitted a twenty seventeen eighteen budget that encompassed uh, many of the operational things that, that go on in the pre-K program. And let me just go over a couple of those with you. There were field trips, parent learning activities, and resources, required professional development that keep us in compliance with the nine hundred and what, thirty-six thousand, two hundred dollars um, worth of grants that we currently have. Playground upgrades that our OSR and DHR require. Technology upgrades that are program required. Classroom upgrades that are OSR compliance required. And that budget also had listed a four-hour music aid. And that music aid was a student that we would have contracted to come in at the McKee site to, to deliver music or to, to have music lessons with the students, because the teachers at the McKee site currently do not have a break, and they haven't had one for four years. Last year, they had the opportunity to have a break, because I wrote an Alabama Power Grant in the tune of ten thousand dollars. That allowed us an opportunity to hire a, a, a student from Montebalo, that was an art student, a, a music student from Alabama State, to come in and teach music. So those were developmentally appropriate educational uh, activities for the children, and it also allowed the teachers to have a break. I have to say that I feel that I have the best teachers, because not one complained about not having a break, not one said that they would file anything with AEA because they didn't have a break. They continued working, they never complained. So I feel that it is important that I do my due diligence to be a voice for them, the students, and the parents that I serve. Because for over the, the past five years, this is year six, we have afforded the pre-K students in Montgomery County a first-class learning experience. By having this, this, this budget redirected and shifted to someone else and skimmed, all of those things are going to be cut out, or minimized, or, you know, I understand all of that. But it was done in no regards to how we operate. And also let me mention, I've written fifteen grants. Four of those original grants, those were the only four grants that were being monetarily matched by the district. The last eleven in-kind matches. And eight of those grants were written so that the district would not incur any additional cost for Montgomery County pre-K, pre-K program, excuse me, because my mouth is dry and I have to have a little bit of attention. But, but those, those grants were written so that the district would not incur an additional expense with applying for our pre-K program to be first class. So we, we operate, and I try very little to ask for anything. You can ask most of the legislators, um, representatives, you can, I mean, just about anybody. I'm, I'll call Bunny's Farm, we have an outdoor garden, they supply the, the fruits and vegetables for us to plant. I use that money also for maintenance of that outdoor classroom. I am, I don't know, I, 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 I look at it and I say, for the past six years, my parents have come in this year expecting that first-class experience, learning experience for their children that the others had. They won't get it. I'm asking you to please consider some things as it relates um, to the pre-K budget and the matching funds for those four classrooms. Again, there are fifteen grants that are written. Only four, because they were the original four. And it fell under the multi-year um, grant funding, which means that whatever the program was receiving at the time that the grants were awarded, that money should not be taken away, because it was all, it's, it almost sounds like it's punitive now that we even apply for the grant as a district. We got the money, so we're going to take this on the side. And, and remember, all of these, these, uh, this, this program, all of those children are, are zoned, particularly at the McKee Building, they're zoned for tiger schools. So I'm concerned about the budget that has been submitted for approval for pre-K.
Let me, let me say this, in this hearing, one, I want to commend you for the grants, because it takes a lot for somebody to write grants, but more so than that, you're setting your abilities. And not too many people will come in here and be a voice for that, you know, because it is about the children, it is about the music, and your hard work and efforts, and you have to understand, we as a board, you get these line items, and you look at the budget, and, and you don't, and they'll say auxiliary, and like today, I had to go, oh, bus is auxiliary. We don't hear stories like this unless a voice, and I'm encouraging other people, unless a voice gets up there and says, hey, this is the deal. hey, this is the deal, I personally did not know that your budget had been cut twenty-five percent. And does it say McKee on here? No, you would notice that because that's your area and I thank you for bringing it. But the sad thing is, is that this board does not make those difficult decisions. You won't even be considered. And hopefully, in these committee meetings that are coming about, where we are sitting on the seven different ones, hopefully these teachers, principals, everybody will get involved and issues like what you've just brought, we can go, hey, we have the money or we can hopefully find the money. But I promise you, if we choose to make an emotional decision over a business decision, it won't even be considered. But I thank you for getting up there.
Well, Ms. Carr, I have to kinda echo what Dr. Kee said. If she's correct, we don't know, it's not itemized, like general services, administrative services. I don't know, you know, there's nothing that tells me the specifics. Other services, I mean, there are no specifics, so we would never know it was you. And I do commend you for coming out because like she said, like Lisa said, this is a business decision and our business is about the business of the children. And so I'm not emotional, but I put the children first and then I think about the money.
My question is, were you given any reasons as to why you were cut twenty-five percent?
Not exactly. I've had very little results in getting any answers since most of my duties, especially budgetary duties, have been directed somewhere else. And so that's why I didn't have any input on this budget, but the budget that I submitted had all of these things included. But as of early September, I was informed that there was a reassignment or rearrangement or whatever of my responsibility, so many things were taken away. So I was unaware that it was being cut this rapid. And so I don't know how to explain that to my parents because before this happened, my teachers did like they do every year, they sent a yearly calendar of events home to the parents. So, you know, parents can't take off all the time, so they get, you know, grandparents and whatnot to, you know, to attend those activities. We know that because we hear them and we have those parent workshop meetings with them that are interactive. So those calendars went out, the parents are expecting these things to happen. And the funding for these things to happen is no longer in the budget. And what do I tell my teachers as well? Because this also would affect the delivery of the learning that they get to the children.
Well, my understanding you had, these were grants. And the grants tend to be, I guess, have line items for certain things that that grant was written for.
Correct.
Isn't that correct?
Correct.
Well, how in the world then if a grant is, it's already in place? And you already have that grant which indicates those line items, how could it be changed?
I would have to defer that to...
Who's that?
Who does that?
Ms. Porterfield, Board members. Ms. Carr is absolutely right, the OSR did increase about twenty thousand dollars, that is a grant that was written. The stipulations, we do follow the guidelines and the stipulations. However, Dr. Sharkins was hired as a supervisor director of preschool and Ms. Sharkins is available here. So Ms. Carr did submit a budget prior to Dr. Sharkins' arrival and that budget was reviewed and we had to follow our guidelines and have a discussion with Mrs. Carr. However, when Dr. Sharkins came on as the director over the preschool, over Ms. Carr, she's here to explain to you all what happened.
Anyway, I felt it here.
But we cannot alter or take away any of her funds. So OSR and OSR preschool money, you still have that budget under your general, number eleven. If you look at the original budget, under general, eleven, OSR, and then you'll have the OSR preschool there. And it did increase about twenty thousand dollars this year and we wanna do tell Ms. Carr thank you for that. But Dr. Sharkins is here and I have to come in and give the details of that.
Ms. Palmer, she's coming up, so is that the funding source fifteen, twenty, seventeen, twenty?
You would look under...
I'm on page twenty-six of the fiscal year twenty eighteen fund balance.
If you look on page twenty-six, that's of the, probably in your original budget, under budget here, number one, and it makes you have the budget here in number two, under the fund name General Fund, you'll see eleven. And you'll see state preschool is the fifteen, twenty, and then under there is the OSR, the Office of School Revenue and Pre-K Grant seventeen, twenty. And so the revenues that we receive and the expenditures that budgeting included. And it was an amended budget from what Mrs. Carr originally submitted to the finance office due to the hiring of a director of preschool. And she's not only over the preschool, she's also over the GIP program. Dr. Sharkins.
Good afternoon. I do have the comparable budgets upstairs, I was unaware that this was gonna be a topic, a conversation, but I can apply those to you. I'd not say that the field trips were not cut, the funding to the classrooms was not cut. They have already gone on one field trip to the pumpkin patch. So whenever I did redo the budgets so that I had a good understanding so that I could explain to my boss, for Dr. Edgelson, if they had any questions, I wanted to make sure I had a clear understanding of the budget. So yes, I did rework that, there were some changes primarily under general funding. I fully funded the pre-K programs out of the OSR and Title I funds. We are not, we are meeting, we are well above a twenty-five percent match, which is a requirement for the OSR. I did not do these budgets in isolation, I did them in partnership with Ms. Palmer, Mr. Glover and also Mr. Taylor who's had, has approved them as well, as has OSR. So if there was something that was done incorrectly, it would have been addressed very far before this. The budgets were due by the end of September and so there has been plenty of time for oversight so that that could be corrected if I've done something incorrect. But I did not cut funding for field trips or for teachers' professional development or any of those critical things that help the classroom run and help it to be a first-class pre-K classroom.
So did you recall specifically what the twenty-five percent cut was?
So for instance, I was looking at this earlier today. The difference, one of the differences between the original budget that Ms. Carr presented and the one that I put forth is for professional development, she had approximately two, I don't know the exact number, but it was approximately fifty-four thousand dollars in professional development. Pre-K, the OSR requirement is that all of the pre-K and auxiliary teachers go to the pre-K conference in January. And that's a requirement or else you will fund it five hundred dollars per person if they don't attend. So I made sure that that money was in the budget. There is not a lot of extra money for them to go to other professional development. So that is an area that was cut, but what was required is still in there. So I don't know, because, well, I don't know what the other thirty thousand dollars was that Ms. Carr was planning to use out of the general fund for professional development. I just know that that was in that category. But that is an example of something that was taken out of the general fund. The general fund, because of this financial situation, did not incur additional burden to the general fund. All fifteen classes were completely funded through OSR and Title I funds without any cut to services for children or teachers.
I know, question, so, Mr. President, if I may, where did the twenty-five percent go then? If there was a twenty-five percent cut?
That's an incorrect statement.
Oh, sorry.
It's incorrect. There's a twenty-five percent required match and we will exceed the twenty-five percent required match.
Let me say something here because we're not getting into debates right here on that. I can agree with you two individuals as well as provide some information to the board on this topic. But we are not going back and forth and we got introduced one against each other in this forum right here. And so we'll redirect and reschedule that piece, but I can talk as well as provide information to the board. So we move along, Mr. President, to the next one.
I think we had someone saying that.
Oh, someone in the front of the chair, who's that? Your chairman?
Yes. Yeah. Uh, we're here, Lee. Uh, I've listened to the bulk of this meeting, how interesting as it was, as well as all have been, I'm sure, the ones to come. But I kind of speaking over the head, as a parent, my daughter is in the pre-K program. Being a principal in this district, a former principal in this district, I try my best since the first day and I expressed to Ms. Carr that I want to be a principal. I wanna walk in as a parent and I wanna walk in as a parent every single day. And so every day I try my best to walk in as a parent, but for some reason when I walk in, I'm still a principal. And so I'm looking at the walls, I'm looking at the security guard when he greets every student this way and he throws his hands back. I'm looking at the buses, the transition, but more important, listening to my daughter come home every single day. Every single day with something new, with something new. Daddy, this is long-seeing, this is short-seeing daddy. And daddy, what is this that we're walking on and I go and it's non-stop? Daddy, did you look at the leaves today? The leaves are orange and those are red. So it makes me pause as a reflective practitioner, as a lifelong learner, as a decision-maker to say, okay, what am I gonna do for her with kindergarten? This is only October. I told Ms. Carr, I said, I want, from the beginning of the year, I said, I'll work with you. With your teacher appreciation, I'll work with you. I'm working with three different businesses now to secure funds for the program, for additional things. When you look at the research and you look at the state of Alabama, when you look at pre-K across the nation and you see the impact of pre-K, everybody may not understand the research, you may not see it this year. But over three, the next three years, the next five years, here's the platform that you're building for other teachers within the district, for all kindergarten teachers across the state. I mean, kindergarten teachers across Montgomery Public Schools, that foundation, you'll see it in the second grade, the third grade and beyond. And to, if it's not a twenty-five percent cut or however it is, I don't come from the standpoint of a cut. I come from the standpoint of an amazing program that if you have not gone to see for more than thirty minutes, for more than ten minutes, but for me, that I get up every single day and I take my daughter, I stop the security guard, I said, what is your name? I said, what is your name? I said, sir, I just wanted to tell you, you don't know me and most people don't when I'm walking because I'm just a parent, jeans and t-shirts. We race to the front, we race to the back, we have fun. As an educator, I'll be honest, it was hard for me at three to teach my daughter because having a daughter at thirty-three and she gives me googly eyes, she can stop the lesson whenever she wants. And so I was concerned about that, to walk into the pre-K programs. At McMillan, the district should first be proud. When you look at magnet schools across, and we put the magnet schools up there. When I walk into a program that I prided myself over fifty-five principals and ranked myself amongst them with my own personal reflection, but to walk into that building every single day, I take a bow to talk to her, the entire staff, from the custodial staff to the transition, it is amazing. If you're in this audience, you should walk in and look at, we speak and we talk about the kids and we talk about the students. And if we're going to decide upon the roof or a child, I'm gonna pick the child every single time. And so I applaud you on your efforts and I came as a parent and I had to speak, keep up the good work. The pumpkin patch, amazing. Good job to the teachers and people should go and look at that program and use it as a model against all of the other negativity that is pitched out toward. You have a goldmine right here in this pre-K program. Thank you.
Ms. Palmer, if I may, real quick, before we say more comments, real quick. Hearing all these fantastic things and this is a budget thing issue here, why do we hire an extra layer over Ms. Carr? Because it seems like, and I'm not debating who was, but how did...
That was, I will tell it over to Dr. Edgelson, have him answer.
There were decisions made to reorganize and that was part of the reorganization of the district office. However, we have to leave each other real breakfast until we will not discuss that piece.
Thank you.
We'll take a couple of more and then we're going to have the bridge of budget hearing again. And just to leave my guest. Oh, my God, you're going to play.
Okay, look, I think this is so very important. The principal just spoke about his daughter who has not yet attended public schools. My daughter actually went to, Ms. Porterfield, went to Georgia Washington. She's not M.D., Selita Jones, you may remember, remember her coming through there. You did an excellent job with her. Ms. Dawkins, I happen to know personally from, I've been a part of that community out there for thirty-two years. And we face phenomenal issues. There's nothing wrong, let me say this, there's nothing wrong with having some emotion about the love and those children that we serve out there and all those people who are gonna need this place. I thank Pastor Webb for getting up and giving some opinions here. But if we're gonna make decisions, make emotional intelligence decisions. And what you said, Ms. Porterfield, and what Ms. Brier said and indicated, that this one-time sale is not a fix. It's just a bandage put on the problem that we have. Now, if you wanna be smart about this, let me just tell you this, I've been a part of that community. I know a lot of these people, most all of them over the thirty-two years that I've been there. They will work with you to find good decisions and to rectify the inequities that you have. The way to lose them is to make unintelligent decisions that offend them and ostracize those people who are part of that community. Because if you're gonna get at the Warren tax pass, you're gonna need the people to be on your side to do that. And what I'm telling you is that as a coalition of good people, Pastor Webb, will you work with me on that West side over there?
We will work on the West side.
And I guarantee you that we will get behind you and support you in every way that we possibly can because I think that's gonna be a better fix than this one-time sale, which is gonna ostracize and offend so many people by that George Washington sale.
Thank you.
My name is Hannah Rock, I was here on Tuesday.
You heard you.
Yes, sorry. I apologize, my calls are not working.
No problem, you did well. You're sincere about your child.
I am sincere about my child. I'm also sincere about every single child that is in that building. I've watched at least half of them grow to that building. And with this in mind, before you make your vote, consider this. Each one of those children is a person. Each one of them have a future ahead of them. Each one of them is your future leader. Each one of them will also, if you sell this school, be put into a classroom that is already full and they will be one of those kids that is considered one of my overflow kids. And they will be pushed aside. My child is a gifted child, unfortunately she was unable to go to the magnet program this year, but I'm happy with the fact that she's at George Washington, she's in the AP classes and she's thriving. And so are all of the other children that are at this school. They are thriving and they are doing well. But when you sell this school, if, and I pray that you don't, sell this school, you are putting these children into overcrowded classes where they will not get the attention that they deserve. They will not do as well in these classes because they don't get the attention that they deserve. Their grades will begin to drop. Their self-esteem will begin to drop. They will go home and they will not care whether they have homework or not because the teacher doesn't even notice I'm in the room. Consider this, consider their current situation, consider their education, consider their future. Ms. Moon, you said earlier that it's only about the fact that we don't want our children moving from rural to an urban situation. That is not the only purpose that we're against this. We're against this because we want our children to get the education that they deserve and we replace them in overcrowded classrooms where the teachers will no longer care about them. And it's not a reflection on the teachers, it's the fact that they're overworked at that point. You are placing their future in the gutter. You are placing their future in the gutter. You're telling them you don't care about them, and you don't care about their education. I understand this is a business transaction, but I agree with you, Mrs. Newton, you're in the business of our children. Please consider this before you make a vote as to whether you should sell this school or not, because our children are our future. And if you don't care about them, you don't care about our city.
I just want to make one comment about the fallacy of the system. I think that if you were a teacher at any school besides Georgia Washington, you would be offended. You can't assume that other teachers don't do their job. You can't assume that every school is overcrowded. You're making a lot of negative assumptions, and you don't need to write that off. We don't have time for that.
I didn't simply say that, ma'am. What I said is that when you place them in the classroom and it's overcrowded, it's not a reflection upon them, it's that they're overworked.
And I would beg to differ with you. I've still, I taught for 35 years, I'm still teaching at South University, it wouldn't matter if I was teaching 30 or 150, they would all be proud. If a teacher's doing their job, ma'am, I can assure you that they'll get the education that they need.
But they're not children, they're teenagers and adults.
I realize it's emotional. It's emotional.
And it's emotional for you also.
I get that.
Here we go. Let's not get...
So it's emotional for you. Well, I understand if she says it's emotional for us, then it's as much emotional for her, because she's still grinding her ass, because she's not at any hospital.
And maybe you're grinding your ass because you're not getting the money from the teachers that are twice in the school. You have put friends and family.
Wait a minute. We don't need to get into that. We're going to have to break this because certainly this is not a behavior that should be exemplified in a forum of this sort. This young man, when he finishes, it's going to be over for this forum. We have one, this guy's standing, we can't go all day. This one is already standing, that's going to be it, okay? That's going to be it.
I was just wanting to get a clarification of understanding, when you're making a business decision, your bottom line, when the numbers say go, is when a business go. With that being said, and you're keeping the numbers in mind, did you also allow the name of the school to be considered at the same time?
As a historic landmark.
As a historic landmark.
And the contract it will not change.
Without, I mean, you're dealing with two different subjects at the same time. You're dealing with the numbers of what the numbers say, but my concern, my interest was in how was the presentation of the historic landmark? I mean, if the numbers say go in a business, that's what tells the business, let's go. Okay, with that being said, if you named the school, whatever you named the school, those numbers told me to go, I need to go with that. So if Pike Road understands that, where the problem come in with the school name being, remaining the same?
We don't have a problem with that. That's our problem, naming. There's no problem naming nor a gravesite, that's already goes, it's already been done.
That's without that.
No problem. Young man in the...
I rise as an esteemed graduate of Georgia Washington High School in Baltimore, and I'd like to know, this gentleman right over here on the end, I guess he's a CPA guy or something, I don't know. But then my question is, why you sell as a balancing act? I mean, it's only one time. What are we going to do for the next time?
You got to set another lady.
That's the question. And then also, I hear $11 million thrown around. Has anyone determined what the fair market value of that school is? And if it's not a cure-all, why sell?
Now, what I would like to say is, when you're talking about selling this school, you're talking about securing a loan through the MPS. If they came to pay for this school, why is this school being sold? And when this school gets sold, all of our children are going to be stacked up on top of each other, and I'm here at the name Blue Baker. Blue Baker is already overcrowded. All these schools overcrowded. Our children are not getting a quality education if you're going to pack the schools. This is why this school was built in the first place, for our children to get a quality education. Now you're talking about selling this school. Number one, it's not underfunded. Number two, is the children are there, quality teachers is there. You do have failed schools. I have a child that was going to a failed school, definitely was a failed school. Jeff Davis over there, I could name a few others. They are failed schools, but our children are still in these schools. Now why is that? Why you going to sit on this board and tell us that you're closing this school down? And there's plenty of schools that you could sell other than Georgia Washington. You're picking on Georgia Washington fairly, and we know that.
So you have a problem with your children going from a failing school to a non-failing school like Carr? Is that a problem?
Including failing capacity? I don't get it.
It's, I think that's about it. We've spent two hours on the budget hearing, which certainly hurt your voices. We appreciate your coming out today to be a part of this budget hearing, but we are, at this point in time, we do have another meeting that we must engage in.
Sir, I was just going to say I can answer your question for you, if I can make that a version, if that's okay?
Sure.
We do have another meeting that we are going to engage in. I think it will come up again because it will be a vote taken, so if you guys won't hang around, you might. But at this time, we will consider the budget hearing meeting, number two. At this time, we will... Good afternoon. The Montgomery County Board of Education, a work session Thursday, October 26th. Good afternoon again. Montgomery County Board of Education, special call meeting Thursday, October 26th, 2017, Senator Alton Auditorium. We have called, at this time, we call a meeting to a order. We do have a forum with seven members in attendance. We need a motion to have the approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? The Senate, here none. Those who are in favor, let's see if I show of hands. Let's see if I show of hands. This is a preliminary. The agenda.
Approval of the agenda. Okay, it is unanimous. First item on the agenda, we consider for approval FY 2018 budget.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Taylor and Ms. Palmer have done a very good job of explaining our current situation from the financial status. And so based on that, we have three options. We have the initial option that was presented both today and at our previous meeting, as well as we have a first alternative and a second alternative. The second alternative, I will not make it as a recommendation because I will not submit for approval, a budget that does not meet the standards or the expectations, so that one will not. The second one, as appealing as it is with the 101% that Mr. Taylor elaborated on, I will not be making the recommendation for that one. So the one that I will be recommending for your approval will be the initial FY 2018 with a surplus of 4.9 billion. I recommend this for the board's approval at this time.
Did you all hear that? It is? Is it here? Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. President, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve the initial FY 2018 budget.
My second.
It has been moved as properly second that we approve the superintendent's recommendation of the first FY 2018 budget. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I know we've heard a lot of discussion in putting a meeting I had last week at Georgia Washington regarding the budget, and this is a difficult decision. It's emotional for everybody. I've told my constituents, nobody wakes up one morning and says, hey, let's close a school down, or let's sell a school. That's not anything that anybody sitting at this table or sitting out there, staff, does.
There are two scheduled meetings, which they will be next week. If we vote on the budget one, then those individuals will not have an opportunity to present in an open forum or public meeting their concerns, which this board has already agreed to death. So with that being said, are we ready for the vote?
I'd like to make one, Mr. President. For anyone that would change their mind, I know publicly anybody that might have changed their mind, one actually said it was because of the nine years. That nine years has been fixed, to my knowledge. So what was it really? That's a rhetorical question.
To answer your question, to answer your question, to answer your question, my understanding is not just the nine years, but it was my understanding that children will be impacted negatively, not only the children who are attending Georgia Washington, or children at Carr Middle, children who are attending Blue Baker Middle, children who are attending South Lawn, as well as Bellograd. So this is going to be a domino effect. It's not just going to impact those children and the teachers in those schools, but certainly all through this district, it becomes a domino effect. And I think that it's certainly something that we would be disenfranchising the students that we're looking for in Montgomery County as opposed to helping the other district. So at this time, there are no further discussions. Then what's discussion? Okay, go ahead.
By our response in order, you go first. But I'd like to please, now that I want to...
Mr. President, I have never been afraid to vote my conviction, and I don't care who is the superintendent, the chief academic, whatever the title is. My thing has always been, since I've been on this board, is to do what is in the best interest of all of our children, all of MPS's children. But I was president of this organization when I voted to close two schools in my own district. It's not about that, because there was a reason why we needed to close those schools. But I still feel in the gut of my stomach that all of this predicates on what is best for Pike Road's children. And if we want to destroy Montgomery Public School system to enable Pike Road to keep coming until they get over to South Lawn, then you all go ahead and vote for this budget.
Is there any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say that while I do agree in part with what you said, it is going to affect other schools, it is going to affect them.
Families.
And families, schools, families, communities, it is, no doubt. However, if we were to do the first alternative budget, that would affect K-12.
He has not recommended the first alternative budget, he recommended the first one.
I understand that, but my point is, Ms. Porterfield, no matter what we do, it is going to affect K-12, and it's going to affect it not just this year, but future years. We've got to make some tough decisions.
Yes, ma'am.
And that domino effect, dominos go either way. If you look at the glasses, I have a feeling when some of these schools will be moving to schools that are not failing, that's one thing. You know, that's something, when we say it's about all of the children, it is about all the children, because whether it's Pike Road or Montgomery, all the children are going to have an education. If you look at the topo map that I've mentioned, you can see this school will be used for children regardless, and 11.25 million to be used for Montgomery children for another... I didn't interrupt you. For a lady that stood up here and said, you know, she needed money for her program, we're going to have a reduction possibly in teachers, possibly in programs, especially the pre-K that we just went over. It just does not, I mean, it is emotional, but this is over business or emotion, and it's a business decision and a tough business decision.
Mr. President, I call for the questions.
We have one more question.
I just want to say that it is difficult to make this decision. And when I think about children, I think about the needs of the children, and I understand that selling this building would help us in 2018 to be fiscally solvent. But then there are other years after that when we won't. So to me, this is an opportunity to say to the county commissioners, you can step up and help in this situation, whether they step up and help and it goes into 29, that's fine, but this is to me saying, we need help. We have the legal limit on Avalor taxes, on military taxes, military rate, and if it were 1% lower, it would be illegal. Now, we talk about the students and how this is going to help, but I would think having the CEO, that he would be the advocate to go out and to tell these county commissioners, show them all of these budgets and say, this is where we are, we don't want risk, we don't want to close schools. I think he would take Ms. Palmer and Jason with him as well to do that. I don't feel a sense that has been done, because all I see is sell Georgia Washington so that Pike Road can open the school, and then we'll figure the rest out later. I don't want to figure the rest out later, I want a good answer now and a good solution.
Okay, Durden has called for closed discussions, are we ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay, those who are in favor of the recommendation by the CEO, that's, she asked for a hand? Opposed is the same. So the budget has been opposed, and it does not fly, and this meeting is now adjourned.